Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. If you could stand up and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love these chairs.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We are going to have the reading of the notice of the annual town meeting as published as our first item. The notice of the annual town meeting was posted on the doors of the township, and it was in our newsletter and in our website along with all the required documents. Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the annual town meeting notice?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And just a reminder, this meeting is run by the electors of the community, not by the township board. So if you are a registered voter in Elk Grove Township, you can vote tonight. Also, copies of the agenda and the financial reports are available at the table. Available over here. Okay, I think there's none left. Okay. Okay, the next item is the election and swearing in of a town moderator for this meeting. Can I have a motion for town moderator? Okay, who would you like to nominate?
I would like to nominate Cory Lacker.
Are there, can I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Nobody else wants to? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will swear you in. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully and impartially
I will faithfully and impartially
discharge the duties of the moderator
discharge the duties of the moderator
at this town meeting
at this town meeting
to the best of my ability.
to my ability.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next on the agenda is reading and approval of the April 9th, 2024 annual town meeting minutes. May I have a motion to waive the reading of these minutes?
I'm sure he did that.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Are there, is there any discussion? Any other?
Did you read the?
Any other nominations?
Did you skip that?
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 2024 annual meeting? Did somebody make a motion?
I think we just did.
You just did it.
We already did.
Okay. Okay, and it's second?
You've already voted.
No, there's two. We did the, we waived the reading of it, now we have to approve the minutes.
Ah, okay.
Okay, so I'll re-read it. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 2024 annual town meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next is the supervisor's report. I'd like to introduce Supervisor Bussey.
Alright, so this is my 24th annual meeting. I should get this right finally. What I'll do is I'll go through the financials, the year-end financials, and then also what we decided to add this year, what I had felt was appropriate, and I also was recommended by a resident, Tom Drake, that we do an end-of-the-year report. And we provide a report to the trustees at Mount Prospect and the board at, Mount Prospect and the board at Elk Grove. But we had not had a end-of-the-year report that we provided at the annual meeting. And I decided that we should continue, that we should begin initiating that. And so you should have been able to pick up an end-of-the-year report. And I'll just go through that briefly with some additional comments. So with the supervisor's financial report, statement report, the opening balances of April 1st, 2024 was $1,982,209.35. Total revenue during the course of the year was $2,933,795.81. Keep in mind, revenue does not, the tax levy is not all collected in that same year. Because of appeals and other issues, the levy from any particular year will come in over a period. Bulk of it comes in, in the year that it's levied. But you have trailers coming in over multiple periods of time. So the amount we levy does not necessarily show up exactly as you would expect in the revenue. Plus, we benefits from trailers from other years. So it will vary, but it's generally in line, generally in line with the levy. Expenditures in the town fund were $3,111,276.61. And the ending balance for the town fund, there are three funds, I should have mentioned right up front, the town fund, the general assistance fund, and the road and bridge fund. And then we have a sewer fund, which I'll mention, but that's a pay-as-you-go. That's not tax dollars. So the ending balance is $1,804,728.55. That is a healthy ending balance for the town fund. I'll then go to this, let's see, sewer fund. I'll then go to the sewer fund, no, I'll go to the road and bridge fund. Road and Bridge, if you remember, we have eliminated the road and bridge department as we had only a couple miles of roads remaining. But we still have responsibility for those remaining roads. So even though the department has done away with, we still have a levy and a budget for the road and bridge department. As it operates now, the supervisor and the board have overall responsibility for road and bridge because there is no road and bridge commissioner. And we, but we still maintain a separate levy to fund the costs that are associated with the road and, road and bridge. I would say, you'll notice that we don't expend anywhere near the same amount of money right now as we do, I mean, as we do raise. But part of that is building up a reserve. Because we, every five years or so, we will do half of the roads, we'll repair half of the roads that we have remaining, and then five years later or so, we'll repair the other half. And that generally runs around a million dollars or so to do those repairs. It probably will be a little less going forward because our number of roads has reduced again. But I think they'll be relatively stable now for a while. So, road and bridge opening balance was $909,812.46. Revenue was $524,269.68. And expenditures was $133,642.77. For an ending balance of $1,318,439.37. That now is an adequate amount for us to handle. The general expenditures we still will have over the next year or so, and then the redoing and the resurfacing and redoing of the other half of the roads we have. So we're in very healthy position on the road and bridge as well here, too. Sewer, as I said, is a pay-as-you-go. Tax dollars, there's not a levy, and tax dollars are not used for the sewer fund. The individuals that actually have the sewers pay for this, pay, are billed and pay for this. The opening balance was $793,886.02. Revenues were $95,612.23. Total expenditures were $13,828.7. The ending balance was $875,677.38. Now, you would say, well, if it's just a pay-as-you-go, why is that, why do we have that balance? And that's because the funds are also used to repair the sewer system, not just for services provided to people who are getting sewer services, but they're used to repair. We have a lot of clay piping, and over the last several years, we've been sleeving the clay pipes with plastic, plastic rounds in the insides. And this will extend the life of those sewers for 20, 30, 40 years. We were having some problems several years ago. We were eating some breakage in the pipes. In fact, there was some catfish in one of them. So it obviously needed to be repaired. And we've started a process where we're doing so many miles every year. We're fairly well along in that program. And hopefully, we'll have it completed in the next two years or so. I would also note that legislation, current legislation, is such where we probably could put the sewers, which are all located in the Mount Prospect area, we probably could, could put that to Mount Prospect. Because it's under their, under their, it's in their town, under their, how would you say, ground. And we're at a point, the legislation now, if you, depending how you read it, we could say that they need to take this, and it's their responsibility. And we were looking at getting it sleeved, get it up to, up to standards so that it would be a fair transition. So I would say, two years or so from now, this board and the supervisor should look at sitting down with Mount Prospect and say, we'd like you to take over these sewers. Because legally, you, we can, we can make you do it, but also it just is appropriate that the residents of Mount Prospect are being, the sewers are being taken care of by, by their, by their village. That is not a core competency of ours. Our responsibilities are social services, road and bridge, and, and the, and the taxpayer advocacy. So this is something that happened years ago when the township had a much larger responsibility across the area, and the municipalities were much smaller. And it just was never transferred over like it should have been. Okay, the last fund is the GA fund. The GA fund is, is pretty well the full responsibility of the supervisor. Supervisor is the one who goes to jail if something happens with this. And that is just the way state law is. So this is something that I pay a lot of attention to, and my financial, financial director is very important to me in this regard, and will be to John. Opening balance in the general assistance is $1,672,620.58. Total revenue was $509,786.11. Total expenditures were $647,052.32. And the overall ending balance was $1,535,354.37. I won't make one other comment on this fund. Legislation passed in the last year or so allows us, if we have a large reserve, to use those funds, to use those, take those funds from the general assistance reserve and use them for other social service-related purposes. So you could use these, as we did, to establish a Ecolane, a software system for routing the senior and disabled buses, because it is related to social services. I limited the usage of these funds from the reserves to one-time events, not to anything that required an ongoing expense. So I didn't want to have a situation where it's a salary, and then you have an ongoing expense associated with that, that, that would be, that would be a burden that would put on, on the GA assistance, or it would also, or get washed over to town. So this fund that now is a source, because it tends to build up, is a source for other social service purposes. That said, we still have to keep a rather substantial reserve because you never know exactly what situation's gonna arrive on the GA and EA side. So, that is a, that, that, that number, or the expenditures in that, are not just anymore for the GA and EA purposes. They also are used, can be used for other social services-related areas in order to keep the reserves at a reasonable level. So that's the financial report. I will then go into the, the end-of-the-year, general end-of-the-year report. Very, very productive year. I think the last four years actually were very aggressive in terms of growth. I think the last supervisor, Supervisor Sweeney, was very much focused on developing or building out our infrastructure in terms of our facilities and in terms of our, our basic structure. This was because we were an old building that we were growing out of, because we had several pieces of property, and we wanted to consolidate everything for efficiency and for communication purposes. But also, we didn't need to have three or four locations. It was better to get that back on the tax roll so the taxpayer could benefit from, from those properties. So we, his focus there heavily getting us into this facility, getting us consolidated, and improving the communication and efficiency of the township. My last four years have been much more focused on programs, much more focused on identifying what the needs of the community really were, and addressing those through either expanding programs or eliminating programs, and adding other programs that were needed. I think we've done a very, very good job in that regard. And I've had a staff that has done a fantastic, fantastic job as well, too. And we've been able to do this very fiscally responsibly. We have not had to raise taxes any significant amount. We continue to be under 1% of the year property tax bill. The community services, let me, let me start out and talk on the administrative side. One of the things we added this year was a community services office. This was a office that provides, this, this is the office that provides services for, for people that need notary, notary of the public services, passports, fishing licenses, and a variety, a variety of other things. The real reason that we expanded and created a separate office here was because the passports grew exponentially. If you could see, the passport revenue is, is significant. It's the only area where we generate some additional revenue. Everything else is all paid for through taxes. This is the one place that revenues will be generated as required basically by the federal government. But this office now allows us a much more efficient and effective way to provide these basic administrative services in passports and, and the handicap placards, notary of public, fishing, hunting licenses, paying your sewer bills, and the like. We have a separate office for that now. And like I said, the passports has become, we've become the primary source for passports. We're a single stop. You can come in and get your photo taken, and also get your passport application into the system. Then I'll move over quickly to social services. I would break out social services in a sense, actually, social services, adult and family counseling, and youth services. Those fall under the general category of social services. I'm gonna address right here the one that's GA and EA, which we call social services. That department has had a significant increase in demand across the board, unfortunately. Particularly coming out of COVID. I think with the changing demographics we have in our community, with the inflationary period we went through. And I, I think also just, I think economically, people were not as, well, I think people were struggling a bit more than we really recognized. And then finally, I think the township has been a much more aggressive job in, in explaining and getting information outreach to let people know what our services are, what we're providing. I think a lot of times, I always felt like the township was the most effective and the most impactful form of government that nobody knew about. So it, I think we made a lot bigger effort to make sure people were more aware of what services we were providing. The areas of particular expansion were general assistance and emergency assistance. General assistance up 200% or so over this last four years. Emergency assistance was up almost 100%. And then another area that has really been explosive is in terms of low-income housing, the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, LIHEAP, that usually runs out of money because the demand is so high. There's a set amount we get, and that, we blow right through it. I would also just mention two other programs that we provide, three, yeah, three others that are kind of unique. The mobile dental clinic is for low-income individuals that can't afford basic dental services. We do that as a partnership with two or three other townships, and with Northwest Community Hospital. That is a very unique service. The van is parked with us, but goes to different townships each time. We also have a medical lending closet, which I think is, has been very aggressively used. And then we have, also provide offices for the Veteran's Service Officer. That's a state Veteran's Service Officer who works with individuals, military individuals, and their spouses. And it's a lot of times, it's spouses who have widows, who have lost their husbands, aren't sure what benefits they're, they're eligible for. This Veteran's Service Officer works and makes sure that they get the benefits they deserve and have earned. And also will work them with other issues. We have situations where someone will come in and, and have a problem. We had a gentleman, an older gentleman, who had six months, had no water heater, and had, had major hygiene issues, had major, just other problems all the time. And the Veteran's Service Officer couldn't provide all those, couldn't help him on all those issues. So we referred him over to our social services department, Cory, and they worked with the VFW to get him a new hot water heater, to help with some financial issues, and also to, well, the VFW also gave him membership in the VFW. So hopefully, he'll, he'll be able to be helped out by his fellow veterans going forward. I'll just mention here on the, on the food pantry, the next thing, the next point I'll go to. Food pantry has seen, as with other social services, general emergencies, has seen a dramatic increase in demand. We've now are servicing, on average, of a one mil, one million. 1,011, we had months where there's 1,200 families will come and visit and use the, the food pantry. We've been fortunate in that we've been able to stock the food pantry either through our relationship with the Chicago, Greater Chicago Food Pantry, and through donations from Walgreens, Myers, and a whole variety of other, other businesses in the area. But I would anticipate that the demand, as this demand continues to grow, we will have to start using funds at some point to supplement the food pantry. It is a shopper's choice food pantry, one where you come in and you shop as if it's a grocery store. You're authorized one visit a month, and two visits for family of four or more. And there's some discussion that maybe we expand that at some point here, given some of the issues that we're seeing in the community. But at this point, this is, this, the food pantry is being very dramatically used. We're also looking at expanding the hours, maybe doing a Saturday morning or doing another evening. We have just Tuesday here right now. An interesting thing that's being done, that I said had to be done before I left, before I retired, and as we were, we're installing food lockers. Food lockers in the lobby are the vestibule of the east side of the building, which is our social services side versus our west side, separate from the east side. Seaside is, east side is more for administrative and tax, that the assessor's office. The west side, because we felt they should be separated, is for social services-related. In the vestibule, we'll have food lockers. What that allows us to do is if somebody has difficulties getting in during the day, even though we're expanding these hours, people still have issues being able to get in food during the, during the day or the evening we're open. These lockers, they will call in, indicate what they need, and then we will put it in the locker, give them a code, and then come in in the evening and use the lockers to pull food, to take their food out of the lockers at that point. I think we're the only township gonna be at doing that at this particular. Oh, that's right, and they're refrigerated, too. So that allows us, in summer, to be able to put produce and the likes in there, and protein. So, the, the food pantry is, is, continues to be a, a source of major demand, and we've continued to expand it and add additional innovation, innovative ways of being able to service the community with basic food needs. Let's see. Go then to, go then to the adult and family, older adult and family, well, I'm sorry. We also, under social services, we also added about two years ago, or two and a half years ago, an older adult benefit specialist. We do not get into the social services bingo and things like that. Our focus is on, is on benefits and on wellness. We don't want to duplicate what other municipalities or frisbee centers doing. What we'd rather do is have a specialist who works with people, like the Veteran's Service Officer, making sure they're getting the benefits that they deserved or earned, and also providing opportunities for wellness, wellness checks, for, for exercise, for other things of that, that nature. Under this, we have a call program that if somebody is, is, needs a check, a monthly check, to make sure they're okay. We have a call program. We also have a, we, since we put the challenge course in bike safety, they have a walking morning when seniors can meet and do, do some walking. We're also talking to a physical therapy company right now that would come in and provide physical therapy advice, and nutrition, and exercise advice and everything. And that's an area where we're continuing to grow. That's an area that we weren't specifically in until a couple of years ago. And so we're expanding that with the focus once again on benefits and on wellness. The senior and disabled bus services also connected under social, the overall social services. We added a fourth bus. We are looking with, probably when it's all done and did, not, in the next couple of months, we will, we will, we adding another part-time driver in order to be able to get all four of those bucks, buses out and working. The, the demand in, in terms of driving, in terms of rides has increased too, slowly but surely. And to manage that, since the number of rides we're providing is growing, we, we established that Ecolane software system, which allows us on a real-time basis to manage the routes. So if something changes, somebody's gonna be late coming out of the dialysis, they will contact us, and the system, software system, will adjust the routes so that people don't have to stand or wait too long for the buses to catch up with their, with their route schedule. The, the buses are all structured for disabled, so it's seniors and disabled. And they're all built so that disabled can properly, and seniors can properly use the buses. I would mention one other purpose. I have always, I've found over the time that some people, I'm not sure if they really, seniors really need to take the bus, but rather, they're lonely and don't have an opportunity to meet other people. And so they will sign up to ride the buses to be able to have some companionship and to talk to people. So it's for them, a social event, which is fine with us. And our bus drivers have done a very nice job in terms of becoming friends with, with the people that ride. I'll then go to community outreach. Community outreach, as I said, we, we, one of the other things that I wanted to emphasize very much when I came on was to make sure that we were more well-known and that people were aware of the services we provide. I know what we do is only a certain portion of the, of the, on the social services side, only a certain portion of our community. But I'd like the whole community to know what we do, because you never know when a family member or friend needs it. And if people are aware of what we do, they will, can reach out and advise them to come here. The one area that fits for everybody is the assessor's office, where everybody has, pays their taxes, and everybody needs assistance in appealing their taxes, which you should do every year because it's, 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 the taxes are becoming more and more onerous, I think, for all of us in particularly Cook County here. We, we have, with the community outreach, we have programs which include holiday programs, the Senior Angel Tree, the holiday gift cards for kids, the toy distribution. This year, there were heavily Star Wars, I think it was, is what it ended up being. That's what got donated, tons of Star Wars stuff, so. And then the Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving baskets are, are, have grown substantially in terms of what we've done. We raised 14,000 from the community in order to, to fund that. Events that we provided has expanded dramatically, free flu, flu shots, Community Services Day, which is a day when we bring in multiple different service organizations, whether it's the treasurer's office, the, whether it's our, some of our people, some of the other, how would you say, nonprofit agencies, the Lions site in Haring bus. We bring those all in at one, at one time. We try to do that twice a year. It's a Community Service Day. We have multiple service organizations here that people can come in and, and take advantage of that. We have a mobile DMV, which has been extraordinarily popular once the real IDs became significant. In fact, we've had a delay this year because they were so overwhelmed, they couldn't provide the, the, the event for us. So we've delayed that, but we've been doing that once or twice every year as well, too. We have shredding events, which we host with the Lions Clubs, Mount Prospect Lions Club and Elk Grove Lions Club, one here and one over at Rexplex. And then we, we have also developed a program. I kind of feel that the, I kind of feel that a lot of the students in high school, sub at Elk Grove, and they don't get civics anymore, they really don't get history anymore. They really don't get history anymore. And 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 that's, I think, is 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 to the disadvantage of our country. So what we've done is we've, we've established a senior education day where the seniors come in and we we go through a whole program with them in terms of what the township, what local government is, what the township is. We give them a tour of the facilities. And then what I wanted to add, but we've got to get more time, Renee, right? We got to get more time from them, is add a board meeting where they would actually, they would actually select from their class members to be on the board. Then we'd have people who would have people that would, students that would get up and address an issue. The board would would, after, after that, the presentation of whatever the issue was, the board would debate it or discuss it, and we'd go through the whole process of a meeting in terms of what's involved from a Robert's Rules of Order basis, but also in terms of the give and take that takes part in a meeting. So I think that was, we have donation drives, Super Bowl, the Mark Mack Madness, White Christmas, and the Cereal Bowl is a good one. I don't know if how many of you have heard of that, but Elk Grove and Rolling Meadows, the high school students collect boxes of cereal, and they compete against each other. And what makes it particularly unique is the principals are married. It's the Kellys, the Kellys are the ones, the wife's a principal at Rolling Meadows, husband's a principal at Elk Grove, and they become very, very competitive. This year, we raised, we collected seven thousand boxes of cereal, which is up from like three thousand, I think. So that was, and that's a lot of fun. Elk Grove was dominating this, but then this year, Rolling Meadows won. So that was kind of nice to see them back in the game. So the outreach, and we also, along with this, we've established a position of a communications and outreach manager who manages these programs as well as works with a public relations firm to get our press releases out, out, and also works on the newsletter and on some of the other programs we do to get information out to the community. We also have a part-time digital communication specialist who manages our website and some of our social media. This has become more and more important, and we have a part-time person helping on that. Let's go quick then to mental health, which is becoming significantly, increasingly significant. As you can tell, the township, the value of the township from a social services and a mental health and a and a senior purposes has grown extensively as we've become more the primary source for services in this area, in that area. And that's where our competencies are, and we work more and more with the villages so that we focus on our competencies, they focus on theirs, we don't overlap, and have the taxpayer paying two or three times for the same thing. So in the mental health area has been a focus area. The adult and family counseling, we now have five therapists offering services in multiple languages. And I I think one of the particularly attractive things or important things we had is psychiatric services. We found that when we would, the therapist would get, would be working with somebody and they needed medication, we would refer them to Kenneth Young, but Kenneth Young was overwhelmed, and they'd be awaiting five, six, seven months, and that, you can't wait that long for 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 getting your prescription. So we established a relationship with or a contract with Jocelyn Center, and they provide us so many hours of psychiatric services so that we can get somebody within a couple days of the medic, the medication that they they need. So that was a significant addition that we put in there, along with the expanding the the counseling team. Unfortunately, we still have a waiting list. Every time we add someone new, the list just grows, and and I think that once again reflects some of the issues coming out of COVID, and I also would say some of the issues associated with the internet and with, how would you say, the the isolation and the and the lack of interaction, interaction in a lot of ways that that are, that we're seeing in our society more and more. I'll then move to youth services. We have recently, very recently, expanded that that department. We, several months ago, added a new facilitator. She's done a fantastic job. Look at, look right at her. And and we also found that as we developed a, the school, our, we provide onsite courses and classes and things like social, social life skills in female or girl empowerment. Those are onsite that we do. But we also had a relationship with the with the school districts, fifty-seven and fifty-nine. And what we've done is we've tried to sort of refocus that, strengthen relationships with fifty-seven and fifty-nine, and now have an IGA, intergovernmental agreement with fifty, fifty-seven, and we have a relationship, not an IGA, with fifty-nine. And the programs, the program that's really taken off here, where that department has done a fantastic job with, is a newcomers course. And that's where they go in and they work with kids that are into the schools for the first time, and most of them can't speak English. And they work with them in order to help them integrate into the schools and integrate into the community. I had no idea how they were going to do this, but they, the schools are ecstatic about it and have been, actually have highlighted it to their boards. So I think what the, what we're finding, we we do, as the township does as well now, is we supplement and can provide additional services that school districts and municipalities can't provide or don't have the ability to provide. So our relationship with the school districts has expanded significantly. The courses we provide here continue. We now added, re-added the challenge course and the bike safety. That falls under youth services as well, too, and they are, they are, they are very busy, and we had a need to expand the 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 team. So that will be three full-time and one part-time, I believe, is what it is. I think, or two full-time and two part-time? Yeah, but the one part-time's almost a full-time. Yeah. So anyway, I want to mention one other thing there that they do in the schools is Alyssa's Mission, and that is a program that we've, we facilitate. It isn't our program. We facilitate at schools, and that's teaches signs of suicide. Works with the teachers and with the kids in terms of identifying issues in the classrooms. And in a lot of cases, there's one or two, out of a class, there's one or two individuals, kids that are identified as having a potential problem. And so this is not only educational, but it also identifies particular problems in those classrooms. And I'll go to, let's see, let's see, oh, we also have a, some townships have a seven oh eight board. What we have is a, is a mental health and wellness committee. This is made up of a, the clerk, who is the chairman, a rotating trustee, and then the adult and family counseling director, and the social services director, and three Elk Grove Township residents. And they review, we submit, we get applications from the nonprofit organizations in the area. They submit those packages, they're reviewed, and then this committee makes recommendations as to who we should fund with. They're not, we call them grants, but they're really contracts for services. And what what this committee is able to do is with with the mix of staff and residents, it's able to identify which of the organizations are really are servicing Elk Grove Township residents, not just providing broader services, but actually Elk Grove Township residents, and also allows us to identify which are the ones we're using, what are the ones that we're referring people to. So the purpose on this is to make our dollars go as far as possible and that the taxpayer gets the biggest bang for their buck, that we're not just broadly throwing money out, but that we're focused on on organizations that are servicing our our clients and that we're using, or our residents and we're using. This year, it's, it, we have provided six hundred and twenty thousand dollars to twenty-nine agencies, and we have great relationships with Kenneth Young and Shelter Clearbrook, organizations of that nature. Last, last but not least, is the assessor's office. Are you looking down? Look up. The assessor's office, we do not assess. The tax, we are, we, in Cook County, the county has taken over the assessment responsibilities. In other townships, they actually assess or assess, it's established the value of your home for tax purposes. Here, we don't assess. What we, here is what we are, is taxpayer advocates. So what we do is we assist township residents with appeals, exemptions, corrections, and and this is a, or this is a, an office that can provide service for everyone, for all residents. And they do a fantastic job in terms of helping people put together appeal or telling them, looking at the comps and saying, don't, you don't, you don't, you shouldn't, you shouldn't put in appeal because you're getting the best deal you can get right now. Or they'll say, yeah, we need to do the appeal, they fill it out, make sure that goes in, and they track it. A lot of times, it'll go into the, the, what's the, who's it go to initially again?
It goes directly online now to the assessor's office.
Assessor's office, but that usually gets kicked back with nothing, and then it goes to the Board of Appeals.
Well, as we explain to our taxpayers, the county rarely thinks they're wrong, so it is infrequent that they choose to lower and assess value. However, you have a second chance to appeal with the Board of Review, and the Board of Review takes a fresh look at the data and the evidence that we present, and we have a higher success rating with getting.
Partially because they're elected.
Well, George, you said that. I didn't.
So that office has done a fantastic job, and it services, I mean, you have like nine thousand visits a year, and and this is coming up as a triennial, which is when your homes are all reassessed. And not only are reassessed, and usually they don't go down, they go up. And then on top of that, in Mount Prospect, you have two referendums that were approved. So there'll be significant increases in taxes in the, particularly in the Mount Prospect area, and that will lead to a significant influx of people seeking appeals and exemptions. So that office is going to be, I think, very heavily used this year. It is every year, but particularly the triennial years. We also, I guess, I just kind of generally went through a variety of areas there. A lot of what I discussed are things that were added in the last, last four years or expanded in the last four years. What we did this, as I said, as financially responsible as possible. We've found ways to try to reduce the burden on taxpayers through the elimination of the road and bridge department, also through changing our financial institution. We moved to Bucy Bank for our day-to-day operations and Wind Trust for our investments that resulted in a three-time, a three-times increase in the amount of interest income that was generated through our, 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 our operational funds as well as our investments. And that was significant. Also, we hired a facilities manager rather than contracting for maintenance and the likes. That significantly reduced our cost. He has been a godsend in terms of being able to do a variety of things that we had to outsource at one time, and more than pays for his salary and benefits. And then little things, too, such as a baler, to take cardboard and compress it rather than throwing it in the dumpster and 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 having multiple pickups, rather by compressing them, we've significantly reduced the number of times that the waste manager comes in and has to pick up the cardboard. We're also looking at opening it up to the community, where the community could drop cardboard off here and as a recycling capability for them. So as a result, like I said, we only had two small, in the last twelve years, two small tax increases to a total of one hundred and thirty-three, one hundred and thirty thousand, and those were all that, and that's nothing over ninety-five, ninety-five thousand residents. But that, what that does is it's being used to develop a capital replacement fund, which means that we are putting money aside for roof, HVAC, for various major components of the building that we want to have money reserved for so that when it, something happens, we can, we can fix it. We have the, we have the funds to take care of it, and it doesn't create a problem. And as I said, your taxes are less than one percent of the Cook County property tax bill, and an average, average resident for all these services that provides a safety net for those that are economically and 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 food-sufficiently challenged, as well as for the services that we provide for youth, as well as the services we provide for the taxpayer is probably less than a hundred dollars per a tax unit or per family or taxable unit, of which I think we have ninety-five thousand residents, but I think it's thirty-five thousand taxing units is what it is. So I, I'm very pleased with what I'm able to report, and I'm very pleased with the progress we've made over the last four years. And I have to say that I've had a fantastic board that has been very, very cooperative and very supportive. We had a fantastic staff. I've always said that a very average supervisor can made to look very good by a great staff, and that is definitely the case. So I just very appreciate the opportunity I've served for four years as supervisor. Before that, another twenty years as a trustee and a clerk, and I feel very strongly about the value of township government. I feel it has a very significant place in our communities and a very significant role in maintaining that basic safety net and keeping our community, how would you say, connected on the bottom, at, at, at the bottom, where a lot of people will fall through. And so I think the, I think that there's a lot of discussion about doing away with township government. I think that's very misplaced, because I think the role we play is significant, and it will not be replaced by a county or a municipality. The cost of what we provide is basically negligible, and our, the people we're serving are probably the most need, need, needful of any sort of, of these type of services. So I appreciate the, the, the ability to serve over these years and want to thank board and the staff, and also the residents for being as supportive as they've been, both through donations and through volunteering and through a variety of different ways, that the community has really come together. I will take, I will take, if anybody, just very short, I don't, can't take up a lot of time, but if anybody has any specific questions, otherwise you can talk to me afterwards if you want to. Yes?
First of all, I want to thank all you guys up there as well. You guys have done a fantastic job. So the only thing that maybe you haven't done such a great job is letting everyone know what a great job you guys have done. Shame on me, because I didn't realize it until I got more involved myself. I do have a question. I was sitting in the den about this Friday, reading the Daily Herald about wheeling. Wheeling just had a change of gare, so to speak, as we out here. And I guess in two thousand and twenty-two, they passed the referendum for one twenty-five million dollars for health. Unfortunately, they didn't bother to tell the voters that that would be an increase in their property. So that was sort of church and rest. So my question to you, knowing that there's a new gare coming, what can we do as residents to make sure, I mean, first of all, is a referendum required?
Yes. For a seven oh eight board, a referendum would be required, and a referendum could be put in place by the residents. A certain number of residents have to petition, or the board could could put forward a, a referendum if they so choose, and would have to be approved by the, approved by the community. And yes, while we provide those same services through our wellness and and our mental health and wellness board, a seven oh eight board would be much more extensive than that in terms of, and they wouldn't have the same, how would you say, focus, they would be much, could be much broader in what they did. And that's, it, it, once again, this is a decision that the residents need to make, and I think people need to be more involved and be more aware of what the, what is happening in their community. I think a lot of times, people sort of sit fat, dumb, and happy until suddenly they get a much bigger tax bill, or until they need something and and it's not there, or it's not there the way they thought it is. But I think we have to take responsibly, that is residents ourselves, that we are aware and involved. I'll be honest with you, at the annual meetings that we've had before this one, I maybe have had, how many residents? Two residents and the staff. I think that's, that's, that's shameful, to be quite honest. And then, and if we're, if we're going to complain about things, or we're going to say that this isn't good or that isn't good, well, then you need to step up and get involved and be aware of what's going on. And I think this township has done a, has done a great job in trying to fill that hole, but we certainly could even do a better job if we had even more involvement from the community.
I agree completely with what you're saying, and this is the first town hall that I've ever seen.
Yeah. Well, your first town hall for ninety-five thousand people, and haven't been here, too, you know? So, no, I, I, and I do understand, and one of the things that, when I, a lot of times, when I first was involved with township, a lot of it was, we do our job, keep our head down and shut up and just do it. The last four, five, six years, we've made much more of an effort through social media, through websites, through the newsletter that we put out, through press releases, through being at events, market days, the block parties, the, the one Mount Prospect Diversity Day. through being at events, market days, the, the block parties, the, the one in Mount Prospect Diversity Day. Those are all things we try to be at and present. And I think that, I believe we're more well-known or people are more aware of us, but still nowhere near what they, they should be. Given that, given how that knowledge and understanding what we do could benefit, could not only benefit our community, but benefit specific people that may, they maybe know that, 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 that they can't advise them or can't recommend they come into us. The one area that I see it significantly expanding is, is in the assessor's office. I see a lot of people now familiar with that and I get so much positive feedback on what a job, what a good job they do. And I'm also hearing on passports now, too. I mean, but passports in the assessor's office, what about that whole social services side? What about mental health? What about those areas? Trouble is people don't, unless they have a problem themselves, they don't pay attention to that. And as a result, that sometimes is left wanting where a smaller group, the, this township and a smaller group of people drive it forward. But boy, if we had more people involved and we had more people offering to participate or help or whatever the case may be, we could do that much more.
I think that's a good, I brought up the mental health thing. I'm going to do four, it was presented to me. Because it is a problem.
Right, right, right.
But you know, they got to be, a referendum for honesty.
Right. Well, and I think, I think the thing on that too is, is that there needs to be an understanding. What are we doing with this mental health and wellness committee? Maybe that's better, maybe a seven oh eight board. But people need to know what the difference are and what they provide. And they all have pros and cons, so, but if people don't know, they just make some off the, you know, off the top of their head, well, I'll do this, but they don't know why they did this. So it's important for us to get the information out, but it's also important for our community to listen and to try to learn more. Because this is a body that does things, are services. We're not policy, we're not setting all kinds of other rules and things like that. We're servicing. And the more of the community knows, the more communities, communities involved, those services can be so much more effective and broadly used. I'm on my soapbox here, so. Yep, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next order is the acceptance of the supervisors and highway department annual reports. Town fund, road department, general assistance and sewer fund. May I have a motion to accept these reports? Okay, and is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next is resolution to set the, the date for next year's meeting. To, resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six to set date, time and place for the two thousand twenty-six annual town meeting. May I have a motion to, to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six? Okay, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It's, it's going to be, well, there's no date.
It's the second Tuesday.
The seventh day of April twenty twenty-sixth at seven PM.
Okay, and now we're going to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good night and thank you everyone for, for attending. See you all next year.